Good morning. We'd like to welcome everyone to our city council meeting for the morning of Thursday, April the 7th. I will note that Mr. Thompson is unable to be with us this morning and is excused, but the rest of our council is present. The first item on our agenda is continuing with our budget presentations, and we're excited today to have the police department with us. Welcome very much. So today, we will receive a presentation on the police department budget and the new domestic violence court. Chief, welcome.
You're welcome. Thank you. Morning, Mayor, Council. It's good to be with you this morning. Chris, you can go ahead and go to the next slide. We'll start off by just talking about our purpose, and a purpose by definition should be simple. And, you know, our very simple purpose is to create and to maintain a safe environment to allow our community to thrive. So you think about Mesa being a great place to live, work, and play, move your family, move your business. You know, that's to the core of our purpose. And when you take, we put our mission statement up there for a reason. We want to basically show, this mission statement kind of lasts the test of time, and the key components of that mission statement, and you look at partnering with our community, reducing and preventing crime, and then building trust, showing respect, and preserving human rights. And then you compare those to the values of the city, and they really align, and that alignment's important to us as we go through our presentation for this budget year. So you look at our performance measures related to the purpose. We talk about sustaining our quality service throughout this next budget cycle. We really pay attention to our community. We've had a presentation, and you remember the Morrison Institute coming in and talking to you, and really pushing out to our community. We already have that community partnership, but then to hear back from our community, what needs are they looking for? And what are the things that they're looking for as far as quality service? And are we meeting those needs? And we're really here, our community, all the time, and that's just showing, you know, the things that we're working on throughout a budget cycle to provide those type of services. Because when you look at the things in our performance measures, violent crime is spiking throughout the country and throughout our state. Yet, this past year, our resources and the things that we've dedicated are holding that violent crime at bay, reducing it in some categories. Some categories are creeping up, but not to the significance that we've seen in other areas. You talk about homicides. Even though homicides spiked just a little bit, our clearance rate on those homicides are nearly 90%. The state average is 61%, and the national average is lower than that. So we're able to address through service those type of situations. Personnel, we'll get into in this presentation, you know, quite significantly to show where we're at now, where we're going in the future, and how we're allocating that personnel. And our mental health and homelessness response has been a collaboration with the community and with our city partners and department directors, as really, you know, such a complex issue and presents so many challenges, but we do so as a city and as a group collaborating with those city departments. Our response time, we're going to talk a little bit about the Real-Time Crime Center today, and how that improves the safety of our community and the safety of our officers responding to these crimes and preventing crimes as our mission stated. And then our dedication to the city's climate action plan, you know, is definitely covered in this year's budget as well. When we talk about Mesa, and we've really, it's really been a proud point for us as a city to talk about how safe our city is. So when you're looking at these, you might catch right away, like, wait a second, chief, these are 19 and 20 numbers. And the reason that is, is the Uniform Crime Reporting System is what we have been using in law enforcement to report to the federal government for years. In 1982, they started doing a study to switch over the crime reporting, and by 2012, they implemented what's called the National Incident-Based Reporting System. So that's that NIBRs. You know, we love our acronyms in policing. But we switched over to NIBRs in 2020. So what you're going to start seeing, Mayor and Council, is a change in the numbers. You'll start seeing an increase. The UCR reporting system is a hierarchy system, meaning if you have a homicide, a burglary, and a robbery, all in one case, they're only going to count the homicide, and they're not going to count the burglary, the robbery, and the other related crimes, even a domestic-related crime. So this system is a more broad-based system that allows our elected officials and the police departments and everybody in the community to take a look at crime and have a better view on a more broad spectrum to how we look at attacking crime. And so when you see increase and reductions from 2020 moving forward, you're going to have more of an apples-to-apples comparison the more years that we start using NIBRs. And it was officially put into play, departments were supposed to start it by 2021, and we started early. But as you look at it, we had a 1.64 reduction in violent crime from 2019 to 2020. The reporting system has not caught up yet, so the federal government hasn't even posted the 2021 numbers, but I have those locally for our city. And what you're talking about is 32 fewer violent crime victims, and that's significant. That's 32 fewer families that have to go through that situation, 32 fewer families that are a victim of robbery, rape, homicide, you know, the top persons' crimes. And the 20 to 21 differences now with the NIBRs has shown an increase slightly of 4% in violent and 3% in property, but still 24 crimes per 1,000 resident. And the next slide will kind of show you, we're not going to, we don't need to go on the next slide real quick, go right back one thing, sorry. That's not, that's my fault, Chris. The next slide will show you how we compare, but I just want to talk about where we're at year-to-date right now for 2022, is we're already seeing a 3% reduction in violent crime so far this year in the first quarter of 2022, and just a slight increase in property crime. And again, that's with those NIBRs reporting system that's going to inflate the numbers just based on the type of system it is. So it's impressive right now on how we're able to stabilize and keep a low crime rate when the reporting system has changed so dramatically. Okay, we can go on the next slide?
Chief, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Is everybody moving to NIBRs? I mean, are we going to have to always explain, hey, our statistics are, we have a more, a higher standard or a more detailed reporting system than other communities, and so, you know? Because we're going to be compared to other cities, and I like the fact that we're going with a more detailed reporting system, but are we going to have to constantly be complaining or explaining that we're on a different system?
Well, we hope not. Mayor, Council, the fact of the matter is, is everybody is supposed to switch over to NIBRs. We are ahead of the game, and we switched over early. So the federal government is going to hold each of those agencies in the United States accountable, just like they did when they stood up UCR, to make sure that they're reporting. And even when UCR was in place, they would only get, they wouldn't get 100% compliance. And so they're constantly trying to keep people in compliance to report. So our records management system, our records section, we are in compliance. It's, we're going to compare ourselves as we move in the future to your question, to other NIBRs agencies, so the numbers are equal. So we've taken anybody that's not reporting out to NIBRs, we're not going to put them in our comparisons, so we can show Mayor, Council, our community how we really stack up apples-to-apples with that system.
Thank you.
And so that's a good segue into this slide. Each of these cities you see are reporting through NIBRs, and they're all within 100,000 population of the city of Mesa. And, you know, for three or four straight years, we're only behind Virginia Beach when you compare our crime rate. And as you look at that, and as you looked at it even approaching this meeting, we're half the crime rate of some cities that are our size, similar demographics, similar community, and we have half the crime. So that's really a testament to the men and women in the Mesa Police Department, but more importantly, our community, and how well we work with our community to attack crime in our community. So it's quite a remarkable number when you take a look at it, especially looking nationwide.
Yeah, Mr. Reddian.
Chief, so going back to the NIBR system, so do you anticipate to have numbers inflate because of the way you explained it was, there might be like six crimes happening in one homicide, let's say, and that will then have in the NIBR system more reported crimes, but before you just reported one? It was, is that the?
Yeah, you have it. Yes, Councilmember Heredia, that's exactly right. They'll count more crimes because it's incident-based. Where before, the UCR system would only count one crime, and it wasn't really accurately reflecting the crime in a community. And so it will inflate the numbers, and it has, to our slight increase. If you took that back to UCR numbers, it would probably show a decrease if you did UCR to UCR, but now that we're in NIBRs, definitely the incident base will show more. There's more detail on the victims, there's more detail on the location of crime. It really gives you a better look at what you're dealing with. And since we've been comstat-driven and data-driven, you know, we're on top of this, but for a lot of agencies, this NIBR system should help them diagnose crime a little bit better.
So should we expect that, an increase on the numbers of crime moving forward, right? As far as, just as we move to their system, we probably will see an increase in the reported crimes, but not necessarily it was based on some of those cases that had multiple crimes within it, that now you're reporting, right?
Councilmember Heredia, that's correct.
Mr. Luna.
Hey, Chief. So in terms of relaying this information to the public, it's going to look like, oh my God, our crime has increased significantly, dramatically, exponentially in some instances. How are we going to convey this information to the public so it's not distorted or they don't become alarmed when they see these numbers have increased? What are you doing in terms of marketing or communicating those numbers to our public?
Councilmember Luna, that's a great question. On our transparency page, we put an explanation on what NIBRs is, what UCR is, why you start seeing an increase in numbers. So just by the click of a button, when they go to our crime stats, they'll be able to see that on our website. And then when we have our community meetings and we, like, when they post the 2020 and one numbers federally, we usually go over that in our community meetings and our forums, and we will explain, similar to what I did here in detail, what that means. Why do you see a spike? It doesn't mean that crime is up in Mesa, it just means the reporting has expanded, and it's going to, it's going to look like it's more incidents, but it's the same incident, multiple crimes.
So are you doing, going to do this in your next community forum, which is going to happen probably sometime soon?
Yes, yeah. It's one of our agenda items to go over to, you know, just to update the community where we're at in crime.
Right.
And then definitely with the changes in 2020 moving forward, what that means when they see crime data in Mesa.
And you'll report it on your social media channels as well, that we're going to be using the system for reporting?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, Vice Mayor.
Since we're pausing, first of all, I would like to commend the entire department and everything you do, but I especially like the, what you did, the summer project, and I think you're doing another project right now, doing like a task force from all different elements, pulling them together in a focus area, and like, just no tolerance and just sweeping areas. I know in my district, in certain areas, it's made a difference, a really, instead of the, just that constant crime and arrest and like that, it's just a vicious cycle, and that really has pulled it down and made a difference and allowed areas to turn over where the community could be more engaged, and our neighborhoods back, and, you know, a sense of that. So I commend you on that. But I imagine doing those projects also does increase, because you're just focusing on a no tolerance with all resources in an area in a specific week or days or whatever that is, that is increasing the numbers too, but I think it shows the efficiency. And in the long term, in the short term, it might appear higher, but in the long term, we hope that it is lowering our crime because we have zero tolerance for those, sometimes our organized crimes, networks going on in an area. So that's one part of it. And the next part of it is because of the NIBR, is that what we're calling them, the NIBR systems? Are you able to use the analysis of related crimes? Let's say you have a violent crime, and there's a weapon involved, but it's also a drug charge and everything like that, to see the type of violent crimes, what the motive or what the underlying thing is, you know, have a related crimes, to see where the focus of how violent crimes are coming into our community, whether it be through drugs or other, you know, gang-related or whatever it is?
Vice Mayor Duff, your first part of your question, as far as our violent crime project, yes, it's significant. We're running the second wave of that violent crime project right now. We're going to run it quarterly. We're going to come to the Public Safety Committee on the 21st to do a presentation on the violent crime project. But what we did see metrically is that when we ran that project and we used all of our resources, literally every bureau in the Mesa Police Department, to focus on those. And we didn't do it just by crime. We had community meetings at the same time that we were going to these areas to fight the crime. We brought the community in from the very beginning, and we saw a reduction metrically on violent crime in those areas. Our arrests went up, but the violent crime went down. So as far as any increases, what you would see is increase of arrests from our officers, but we noticed a crime dip, especially in violent crime in those areas, and we were able to analytically show that. And so that's why we pushed that to four times a year. As far as digging into NIBRs and finding like the root of the crime and motive, we do that consistently on, every day. So daily, our analysts are looking at motive, they're looking at any sort of what we'll call stringer, multiple crimes, whether it's property or violent, and they start analyzing that every single day in a 24-hour period. And then that's how we develop our missions each day in patrol and with our specialty units, about where we go and where we put our resources to attack those issues. And then on a bigger scale, if, you know, say domestically-related, and you're going to hear from Judge Tatts here in a little while about domestic violence court, and you start looking at, you know, causes of violent crime and the things that are increasing, what are we doing? We're constantly looking at the motive, and we're adjusting our tactics to deal with that. So NIBRs will help, but I'm pleased to tell you that we've dove into those data categories significantly for a very long time now.
That's good to know.
Okay, so Chief Rankin is going to talk to you just briefly about our Axon expansion. And you've been presented on Axon, the body cameras, plenty of times, but what I want to reiterate is, in 2012, we were one of the first agencies, especially our size, with support of city management and council, to implement the body cameras program. And there's agencies still today, still trying to implement a program, and we were one of the first and noticed, recognized by IACP, which is the International Association of Chiefs of Police, as a model for that program. And so what you're seeing now with your support is an expansion of that body-worn program to not just supervisors, but to our specialty units, where other agencies haven't gone to yet, where we're putting cameras on our folks. And, you know, just to expand that program and build on that transparency that's so important to us, to our other units that traditionally have not have cameras. So Chief Rankin's briefly going to discuss that.
Good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. With your approval of the mid-year adjustment, the body camera program has been expanded to include all uniformed officers and detectives. The body camera program has been upgraded to the chest-mounted Body 3, and our allocation of body cameras has increased from 456 cameras to 669 units. This includes all necessary hardware, docking stations, user license, unlimited storage of body camera footage, and device warranties. The upgraded camera system provides us with one operating system, which provides faster downloads, quicker battery recharge, and improved audio. The upgrade also includes our conducted energy weapon, commonly known as TASER, to the TASER 7. The expanded deployment of body cameras within the K-9 unit, SWAT, the Violent Offender Unit, Major Crimes, the Gangs Unit, Street Crimes Unit, has been completed. Near-future on-body camera deployments will include the school resource officers, the mental health support team, and patrol sergeants. The increased deployment of body cameras will not only increase transparency, but will improve officer safety and contribute to increased risk management.
Mr. Freeman, and then Ms. Spillsbury.
He always lets me go first. So our SRO officers have not had Axon previous?
Mayor, Councilmember Spillsbury, that is correct. One of the things that we had to do with the SROs is we had to work hand-in-hand with the Mesa Public School District, as well as the other school districts, to develop a MOU to ensure that the privacy of children were maintained. And so we wanted to develop a program that was not only suitable for our officers, but ultimately, and most importantly, suitable for the school population.
Okay, that was going to be one of my questions, but that, I think that would be an awesome thing to have. And then the behavioral health, is that these new, newer teams that we're talking about, like the Solari teams that are going out, or this is something different?
Mayor and Councilmember Spillsbury, the mental health team used to be known as the crisis response team. That is the team that we're talking about. Those are our detectives who serve within this capacity. They will be receiving the body cameras shortly. Because of the amount of resources and personnel we have to do the actual deployment, we had to prioritize which units would receive those cameras first. Like I said, near future, they will get them, but they do not have them as of yet.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Chief, I was with some officers recently, and they, we talked about the technology involved in the Axon cameras, that if one of the, I don't, can't remember if the weapon or the TASER was removed, all the other Axon cameras came on around the officers, is that correct?
Mayor, Councilmember Freeman, that is correct. So the technology continues to improve, that is the benefit to the officers. As officers respond on scene, given the dynamic of the situation, there may be an officer or two that forgets to tap on their camera. As the situation develops and weapons are drawn, that will activate the cameras within that geographical location.
Yeah, I thought that was a really great feature, because it provides a lot of transparency on what happens at any scene that you have, so.
Yes, sir.
So thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Mr. Reddian.
On the cameras, I know that a big piece of it is storage, and it's kind of evolving as far as with everybody utilizing camera now, the cost of storage is going to, you know, go up. Is that, did you mention that that's embedded here in this cost, or is that an additional cost that we're looking at? And then my second question is, a lot of the videos that we see is more of a after-the-fact. What do you do proactively looking at videos? Is it the technology within searching? Do we look, can we look at keywords? And what do you do proactively to look at how officers are handling situations in a proactive manner, using the cameras and the storage that we're collecting on a day-to-day basis?
Mayor and Councilmember Heredia, to answer the first question, the storage is included within the contract, and that part of the contract provides us with the unlimited storage of that, the data that you're referring to. As far as the proactive approach, we do mandate our supervisors to do an audit of their officer's video. That audit, again, is proactive and allows us to do a consistent review. In terms of keywords and other future technologies, I know Axon is working on the ability for us to search keywords, search key videos. That would make it much easier. As you know, you could have a call where you have 10 officers, they're on the call for an hour, so you have 10 hours worth of video. It'd be extremely difficult for a supervisor to go through all 10 hours of video. So the idea of having a keyword search, a video-image search, will certainly be a benefit when we do these audits in a proactive fashion.
And Councilmember Heredia, Mayor, we are looking at a software company, we're vetting that out right now, that does that even prior to Axon turning on their features. So Chief Wessing is researching that as part of our, one of our strategic initiatives, and it will key on keywords, it will key in. So if we have an officer, you know, that's being unprofessional, using unprofessional language, it will key in on that and then send a report through the supervisors, so we can further look at that video if it wasn't caught on any of the other audits. So we're looking at that software right now, because we feel like that's a, you know, even another step towards, you know, improving our service and transparency within the community.
Mr. Luna.
I don't know if you talked about the data storage. Do you have capacity enough, and do we, do we have enough servers, or are we in the cloud? How's that working?
So Mayor and Councilmember Luna, because it is stored in the cloud, on someone else's servers elsewhere, we have the storage that's needed to cover all the video that we have.
What about if the camera breaks down? Do you have, will you have additional cameras that officers can use? Do we have a contingency plan for that?
Yes, sir. So we have a team responsible for ensuring that each and every one of our cameras are up and running. We do have reserves that are, allow us to replace any cameras in the field that are defective.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I'm, it's wonderful, we're expanding the camera program. It sounds like over 200 additional cameras. The numbers I wrote down from about 450 to 660, so that's a significant increase in cameras. And I think what you said is that every uniformed officer will have a camera, but it seems like, I mean, I assume there's maybe more than that, because it seems like a lot of times when we're later reviewing police officer-involved shootings, sometimes it's when we're involved in like a special task force, you know, with federal or regional departments serving felony warrants, and you kind of know going in that this could potentially be a tactical situation. I mean, that to me seems like, man, I really hope we've got cameras in that situation, where we've got officers that are involved in hazardous assignments, but they're not wearing uniforms. So what's the rules as far as that goes?
Mayor, and the units that you're referring to would be predominantly the K-9 unit, SWAT, the Violent Offender Unit, Major Crimes Unit, and Gangs. And you are correct, when they go into a tactical situation and they put on their tactical gear, they're required to have that body camera. So each of those units that you're referring to, whether they're on a federal task force or not, have been issued a body camera.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, I'm going to be speaking for the next several slides. You know, we're in a really good position in our city right now, and I think there's a lot of credit that goes to the support that we have from you as our elected officials and certainly our city management. The next several slides, we're going to talk about growth. We're going to talk about the growth that we had in our organization and the support that we have from our community to get there. As we're going through the slides, and as I'm speaking, I'll pick out one or two of the things per slide to speak to. If there's questions on any other things on the slide, by all means, we're prepared to answer them, but out of respect for your time and everybody else's time behind us, that's, that'll be the approach that we're going to take on this. So on this particular slide, I'll highlight our Technical Services Division Manager, and Chief Rankin's going to spin back in and give us an update on our Real-Time Crime Center. And you can see that we've added positions there to support that Real-Time Crime Center. So the Technical Services Division Manager is a position that we have within our organization. In the next several slides, we'll show you how we designed our organization with the implementation of the Public Safety Sales Tax. During that conversation years ago, and what will remind everybody today, is we looked at our organization, and we wanted to have a nice balance between our sworn and our professional staff. As you guys know, our professional staff, we also call them civilians. So when we use those terms in our presentations, they're really interchangeable, but I didn't want anybody to be confused. The Technical Services Division Manager, it is a leadership pathway. We looked at our organization and how we've had sworn commanders running areas in the past, understanding that 40% of our workforce is, they are civilians and professional staff. And we wanted to give those individuals the opportunity, just like on our sworn side, to rise up through the ranks. So starting in an entry-level position, educating themselves through our tuition reimbursement program, taking leadership courses, applying for leadership positions, promoting, and promoting, and promoting, almost in a mirror image of what we do on our professional staff. So that position was funded out of support by the Community Council and Mr. Brady, and that's why we have that position up there. We're really thankful to have it. Chief Rankin?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council, in regards to the Real-Time Crime Center, on June 21st, 2021, the Council approved the development of the Real-Time Crime Center with the objective of integrating technology that allows critical information to be gathered and disseminated to officers in real time and to provide virtual patrol of crime hotspots, which includes parks, city facilities, and other public spaces through remote monitoring of real-time video feeds. Today, I'm happy to report that the build-out of the Real-Time Crime Center is on target and 75% complete, with the scheduled go-live date of May 17th, 2022. The initial build-out of the Real-Time Crime Center is located at the Mesa City Court, and eventually will be located on the second floor of the Mesa campus for higher education. Today, we continue to work with our vendors.
Today, we continue to work with our vendors, city IT, transportation engineers and private sector businesses to maximize community connectivity and build a safer Mesa. Soon, Council will be invited to tour the Real-Time Crime Center for a first look at what we believe will be a model of innovation within the valley and beyond.
All right, we'll transition to the next slide. So these, these are positions, they're mid-year position ads. They're actually funded by surrounding communities. So you can see there's, there's a lot of positions on there. Other communities have come to us seeking assistance. You can see that we are doing communications. That's the 911 operations and dispatch for Queen Creek's new police department. They didn't have the capacity to build out their, their own communication center, so they started collaborating with us about a year and a half ago in order for us to provide those services. And you can see also the Tempe and Queen Creek came on with our Regional Crime Lab. They're, they're joining in, in concert with several of the other agencies from around the valley. What those agencies have seen is our nationally recognized and accredited crime, crime lab is super efficient. It's really, really good at solving, helping us solve crimes. And so they've seen the value in that and they've gone away from either creating their own crime labs within their respective communities or going to the state crime lab. We have faster turnaround times with our crime lab, which helps us solve crime a little bit quicker. I think that helps us regionally because when crimes are occurring in our neighborhood cities and we can help them solve it faster, it impacts our crime here in the city of Mesa. This slide is actually a really cool slide, so with the, this one goes back to the fiscal year 2223. But this slide is a slide that we've used the last several years. Certainly, we designed it when we had approval from our community for the Public Safety Sales Tax. And it demonstrates the growth within our organization, the continued support, support that we have from our, our community mayor, vice mayor and council, all of you and certainly our city management. So what this slide says, what I want to point out is the total after six years, it shows 125 positions that we've added since the implementation or will add since the implementation of the, excuse me, of the Public Safety Sales Tax. Now, if you recall, just a couple of years ago, that number was 117. So Mr. Brady and OMB have continuously looked at the sales tax dollars and authorized growth based on the performance of that, of that sales tax revenue. Again, on the last slide, I spoke about the breakdown between our sworn positions. You can see on there, there's quite a few sworn position ads. A couple of that I'd like to highlight are those support positions that are outside of patrol. So as we've grown patrol, and we can talk about that in the next several slides of what that looks like, we also have the need to grow our investigative staff, our CIU, our detectives and everything else. As more patrol officers out there doing patrol work, those cases that they take initially are done behind the scenes by detectives. So we've built that into our growth, but as the city continues to grow, we will need to continue to evaluate what that looks like for our community. Because that's, a lot of times, that's where our crime and our, our quality of life for our community gets solved is behind the scenes after the initial response. Over on the right-hand side of the slide, you'll see our professional staff position ads and at the very bottom is the mid-year position ads. Those professional staff position ads are civilian ads. They do a lot of work to offset some of the things that our police officers do. I think Chief Cost can, he can probably give us an overview on what some of those positions do and how they support and assist with our patrol operations and our investigations.
Great. Mayor and Council, as you see on the right side, you're gonna see a couple of positions. I'm gonna highlight a couple of those, like our police investigator, for example. Right now, in the Mesa Police Department, we have 23 police investigators. And nine of those work in Chief Rankin's Bureau for Investigations, and they do a variety of tasks. They work fraud, they work cold cases, they support and work missing persons. And some of their duties are, they're limited as far as there's, they can't do some of the sworn duties, but they can do a lot of the duties that a sworn officer would have to do. So they can't arrest people, of course, but they can investigate. They can do background, they can do investigative research, they can do intelligence, they can contact victims. They do incredible work. In fact, when we do an analysis of the hours our nine police investigators do in one bureau alone, the amount of hours they put in and the amount of cases that they're assigned, when you add those up yearly, the cost difference is about $380,000 just for those nine alone in Chief Rankin's Bureau. That there's, those are, those are tasks that officers would normally do. Now going into the crime scene specialists, when I first got on 27 years ago, we had crime scene officers. And so we had officers that were out at scenes, at burglary scenes, at homicide scenes, at robbery scenes, and they were the ones taking pictures, dusting for prints, working the crime scene and extensively out on those scenes for hours, working them, and they were sworn officers. Right about that time, as I came on in 1995, they started the Crime Scene Specialist Program and the crime scene officers started to basically just rotate out as, as they got out of the program. Since then, these officers, these crime scene specialists have grown to 21 crime scene specialists that are out in patrol and, and working as part of our forensic services division and Kim Mesa, and they're doing incredible work. We're talking over 10,000 hours that they put into crime scenes that our officers do not have to do. And they cost about 54% of what an officer would, would be just working those crime scenes. So we've been at the forefront of using our civilian professional staff in areas where officers would normally have to do work. And that includes our police service officers that are out doing traffic accidents and, and hit-and-runs and, and multiple investigations that really free up our officers. So when we talk about our 60/40 split, we're really maximizing our civilian professional staff to offset what some officers normally would do traditionally.
So Mayor and Council, I mean, there's a message here that we've been working on for years, that there is a place for civilian professionals inside of public safety and they really can free up our, you know, highly skilled, highly trained sworn officers to go back on the street, go back to really responsibilities only they can do. And so this is a pattern that obviously we're looking at other locations to pilot. But the Police Department has embraced this for years and, and continues to utilize these highly skilled, academically trained civilians to take on some of these responsibilities that otherwise patrol officer or some sworn officer would have to be held back to continue to do the work. So it's really worked out well and Police Department has really seen how effective it can be in providing those services.
Mr. Freeman.
So Chief, how's it, how difficult it is to fill these positions? Do we have qualified applicants that you're able to put in these positions or tell me a little bit about that?
Mayor, Councilmember Freeman, some positions are not difficult at all, especially like our crime scene specialists, for example. Folks out in, in the academic community getting degrees in forensic science that want to get into forensic services, there's a line out the door. I mean, that, that recruiting has never been real difficult. And the turnover isn't really high and, but they're getting great experience. We have a lot of those crime scene specialists that end up in forensic services, working other positions. Our police service officers, we haven't had a really hard time filling that are out in the street doing traffic accidents because you're talking about, usually it's, it's some of our younger generation that they want to get a taste of law enforcement or maybe they, they, they're not sure if they want to be a police officer, but they want to be out in the field and kind of see what it's like. And then police investigators, I'd have to really get back with you on, on how we're doing on recruitment, but where our vacancies are very low right now and we're, we're in the process of filling those. I don't, I haven't heard anything reported up to my level that we're having issues getting our police investigators who support the detectives.
Okay. I just wondered about the age of some of these applicants and are they young, younger people? You said different generation or younger people or are they older experienced qualified individuals?
Mayor, Councilmember Freeman, it's, it's a mixture. Like our police service officers, I talked about the youth that are thinking about getting in, but we have police service officers that are a complete generation older than that, than the younger generation. And so we, we have, we have a good mixture. If you were to look at our staff of 14 crimes, our, our police service officers, you would see a variety of ages. And, and our police investigators are normally not real young. Normally, they have experience, they've worked in criminal justice, they're degreed, they have some experience, whether they work private investigations in the private sector or other experience, related experience, when they come in the door, they're usually not on the younger side.
Just for the record, age is not a determinant of hiring someone.
Right, right.
So we just, we have to be real careful with that.
Okay. Well, thank you. That's, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions before we proceed? All right.
Okay, so here are some operational sustainability items and improvements in the well, as well. A lot of stuff on there, so I imagine there, there could be some questions coming out. But one of the ones that stands out for me is our police psychologist program. I, I know, because we've had conversations, Mayor and Council, that we've spoken about this in the past, how robust our peer and wellness team is in the Mesa Police Department, how, how well it works with our, our fire counterparts and then how long it goes back. In fact, I know we've, we've all spoke about other agencies from around the state and around the valley come and look at our program and, and really take the blueprint and apply it into their organization. But you also know that our agency is an agency that we're never good enough with the status quo. We're always trying to look at how we can do things better. And that's exactly what this police psychologist program is. So in looking at our peer and wellness team, we, we realized that we wanted to expand it and that there was a need to expand it. You know, for example, in 2017, we would have 1,800 contacts with members of our organization. So that's 1,800 of our police officers or professional staff civilian members that came to our peer team and asked for some type of service, asking, having some type of difficulty in their life. The last two years, it's been right around 5,000. So our program is successful, our officers are feeling very comfortable that, that they can come confidentially, speak to one of their peer team members, seek a referral to outside assistance. But that's, that's quite the jump in our organization. And so for us, when we were looking at the data, we realized that, hey, we, we should do more. Our program is growing, it's being successful, we have an opportunity to help. So we started researching, what could we do? Our current system is, we have one sworn officer that's transient in nature. We, we all know that we transfer officers, they don't stay in positions for five, 10, 15 years, they move on, they promote. Things can happen and we didn't want to lose any of the expertise that our primary coordinator has built over the years. We realized that putting a sergeant in that position, that, that individual would be in the same, the same position as our officer. They could transfer, they could move somewhere along the lines, and then we would lose that expertise to another area of the organization. So in our research, we realized that hiring a board-certified police psychologist not only had a cost savings over a police sergeant, but it allows us to hire an individual that could effectively be in that position for a long-term, long period of time and supervise the individuals that work on our peer and wellness, wellness teams. A lot of things that they could do in that position with their expertise. One of the things that we think is the, the most beneficial is almost to have a case management component with our officers on a confidential level where the officer comes in seeking services, going through a difficult time, or even on the aspect of financial services, because that's part of our wellness component, you know, lining them up and then keeping track of, of that system or that individual officer within that system. So we, we took this program to city management. City management was overwhelmingly supporting the, the concept. And so we, we thank you for considering that for approval this year.
Chief, before you proceed, Mr.?
Question on the, is that an internal position or is that a vendor position?
It's, it's a police, a city-funded police position where they are embedded in the police department as an employee.
And they're a board-certified psychologist, you mentioned?
That, that's correct. So upon approval, Councilmember Heredia, what we will do is continue to develop the job description, go down the recruitment path, solicit, you know, applications through recruitment, do the interview process, vet, vet the individual out and then bring that individual on and likely embed them, this will be Chief Cost's final decision in our human, the Police Department Human Resources section.
And then you mentioned as far as the number of contacts with the police officers increasing to 5,000. Is that attributed to the, the amount of just services and awareness you all built? Or could that be also folks, an increase of just the anxiety and issues being, happening in the police department currently?
Councilmember Heredia, that's, that's a, that's a wonderful question. And the easy answer is it's both. You know, as you get the information out there to your membership, to your organization, they realize that help is available. And then in our organization, you know, our, our police officers, we're cautious, you know, we're a little bit skeptical. And it takes time to build that comfort level to where our officers feel safe within the system. And I think it's a combination of that. In addition to policing is an incredibly difficult job on human beings. You know, our officers, even our professional and civilians that are in the field, they see things on a day-to-day basis that most people don't see in a lifetime. And so that weighs on individuals and that's really the crux of how, you know, why our program is so successful historically, why it's continuing to grow and why we need to continue to be tip of the spear and innovative with how we offer services to our, our members.
And on the issues, sorry, on the issues, I know during critical incidents, you, you separate the folks involved in those pieces. Is there other proactive measures that you do if, you know, for instance, a, a police officer sees a death or sees something other that could be a jarring moment for them as far as? And then initiate some, some of those, these psychology or assistance programs that, that you've developed?
Councilmember Heredia, yes. So what, what I think you're asking is, you know, outside of the, you know, the, the big critical incidents, you know, in the day-to-day operations, do we have reach-out contacts? And the answer is yes. So we have our full-time members of the team, but we also have the part-time members of the team. And those part-time members are spread throughout our organization. They're trained exactly the same. But those are the individuals that as things are coming up in the organization, we have many, many mechanisms, many, many pathways in order to, in order to facilitate those, those reach-outs. But the simple answer is absolutely, we do.
But Chief Butler, while that happens, this will provide a professional individual who can be responsible for that follow-up. Because sometimes it's not just one incident, right? It's the accumulation of
That's correct.
incidents over a period of time and then
That's correct.
just not recognizing how that is, I don't know what the right word is, but that is adding to each other and that compounding effect and that human hopefully, that's why I was so excited about, because unfortunately, I see these cases to the point when they're, they're trying to exit, you know, trying to get to medical retirement. By then, it's, I would say it's too late, but it's, a lot, you know, a lot has already happened. So anything we can do on the early end, the follow-up and having someone who's just on that focus, I think that was, we all seemed to agreement, this would be a good thing for them.
Yes, sir. He explained it perfectly.
Then I had a question and some, another topic, but.
Chief Butler, so the psychologists, is that a master's position or PhD? Because it seems, to me, it seems low for a PhD.
I think the board-certified, I don't know if it's a pathway for a master's or for a PhD. I would have to look at the recommendation or the requirements to be board-certified. Board-certified's a nationally recognized system, so in order to pass boards, Councilmember Luna.
You know, Chief, Chief Butler, what we could do, Holly, I was thinking, we could go and see what the credentials we have for our retirement board, the, what we, because we have psychologists on for the independent review. Maybe we could look at that.
Okay.
Make them come, because that's who we send to when we do the independent
Right.
exam. So we could look at those same credentials and then make sure we're all looking at the same level. Because ultimately, that's what we rely upon is the advice, the counsel that comes from a board-certified psychologist at the board level. So maybe we could just make sure they're consistently the same. Does that make sense?
It does.
Everybody, okay. So we, we can follow up on that and make sure this number.
So there'll be wiggle room in case we need to increase.
Yeah, yeah, we can.
It would seem to me a PhD position that's.
No, it's not a psych hide, because it's only the psych help.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Before we move on, just for those who might be watching at home, can you define some, some terms on the screen here? What, what is the grappler program and what is TOPAS enhancement?
So the grappler program. So the grappler program. Sure. So the fourth-year enhanced training academy, Mayor and Council, that is continued support for running the third police academy. So that's those extra monies that are required for us to run three police academies. That's something that we've had conversations, we've come to over the last several years. And Mayor and Council, you have also supported. Thank you guys. I think I explained that one well. The grappler program, Mayor and Council, that one.
It's about two minutes.
It's about a two-minute video. It'll.
I picture the jujitsu program that you're. Your clothes is just with the vehicle. We need to send a bill to Cox for the free advertising they're getting today.
Hey, free advertising for 10, for 10 seconds. Just go to the actual. If you can forward it.
For those who can read clips, this is going earlier.
So this program, Mayor and Council, is something that we have currently. We ran a pilot program to evaluate, you know, replacement for the pursuit intervention technique. So the PIT maneuver is something that maybe you're familiar with. That's the maneuver that you would see on television where a police vehicle would go up behind a vehicle that committed a violent felony and they're fleeing. And they would gently bump the rear of that vehicle, which would cause that vehicle to spin out. And then ultimately, we would stop that vehicle. What we've seen with that vehicle or with that technique over the years, while it's effective at times, it's pretty costly in the aspect of it's damaging police vehicles and it's damaging other members of the community. And this is a great picture of what the grappler looks like that was just on the screen. We were, we came to end the life of the vehicles that we utilized to practice that maneuver in 2019. And to refresh that program, we were looking at a million and a half dollars to outfit, to purchase more vehicles and to outfit vehicles. And here's a really cool one. This kind of gives you an overview of what happens. It really does. So on that, one of the last slides, there's a mechanism that mounts to the front of a police vehicle. And that mechanism comes down as the officer inside, who's trained on the system, pushes a button. It's got a nylon net attached to the front of it. It's kind of spread out like a spider web. And they drive that spider web like a V over the rear axle of the vehicle. And it entangles in the tire in the rear axle and drive, not the drive shaft, but the rear axle. And that causes the vehicle to stop. It stays connected. And at that point, our officers would perform a high-risk traffic stop on it. Whereas the counter to that in the past was, we take a vehicle that's doing 35, 45, 55 miles an hour, we bump the rear end of it, it spins out, it loses control, hits a curb, hits a median, maybe hits a stop sign or a light, comes to a stop, and then we come and lock that vehicle in with two additional police vehicles. Through our analysis, we didn't really like the outcome of, in respect to the damage and the risk to our community. So as we started researching this, we came across this program, which was very, very new in law enforcement, and not a lot of people were doing it. And we purchased a couple of them. We tested it and then we evaluated. And we got to the point to where now we want to outfit our patrol stations with vehicles on this throughout the organization. So it jumps us from two to closer to 25 of these, of these systems. So that will be strategically placed throughout our organization.
Have a grappler for the actual suspect when they jump out of the car? No? Yeah, spider web. Okay. That'd be cool. But this is pretty cool.
Councilmember Spillsbury, that's the, that's the jujitsu program. So records overtime. If we need to get into more specific detail, Assistant Chief Nesbit's in the back. But I can, I think I can speak to it at a higher level. And I'm going to combine the records overtime with record staffing and the document conversion assessment. Because they're all in collaboration with the same thing. They're just little different systems. So we've had our police records and public records area forever, right? Well, as the city has continued to grow, as Axon cameras have become more prevalent, we've expanded those programs. Members of our community want access to the public records that are created by those systems. So for the last several years, we've been doing evaluations in our records area in collaboration with the city and Performance Excellence to figure out how we can do things more effectively in that area. And if you recall, last year, one of our mid-year position ads was we added seven or nine additional persons to that area. And we thought, okay, let's see what that does to increase efficiency in those areas. In addition to that, we authorized through Mr. Brady additional overtime as a way to offset positions if needed and to continue that evaluation. Well, that evaluation has continued. We have gone back to city management and showed the results. And Mr. Brady has authorized us to come forward to you, Mayor and Council, to request the additional staffing in that area. Well, that will be a continuous evaluation. So that's what those, all of those clumped together, it really is. It's a community service-based system. It allows the members of our community to get access to the police reports, the records, the redacted information with the on-body camera in a more reasonable time.
So right now, Mayor and Council?
We're, the volume, Gina, you're going to have to help me out with this numbers. But we have, we're, the volume coming in through the system is like 26,000?
28,000, 800 a year.
Eight year. Yeah. So that volume and the, and we've got, we have so many requests, right? For insurance purposes, for a variety of different requests. And the time it takes us to process those requests back to the public, we're just falling way behind, months behind. And so we just decided to make that, I mean, a priority this year. Well, we made it last year, and this year, we're continuing to look at additional resources. But to the credit of the police department, they've also brought in some analysis to try to find, I don't know if, I guess a fast-tracking and processing, improving how we make, kind of sorting out the requests. Because some of the requests could get hung up if it's a homicide or a request. It can get, you know, it can take a lot of time. But then there's, it gets pushed, all the other, just, you know, probably just vehicle bumper crashes get, you know, delayed. And so really, this is a customer service response to try to get our records available to our public sooner. So we're just, the volume is significant, as you heard. And we've just got to figure out a way to resource this better to get those records out to our public, to our community. So that's what this is.
That was my question on the records. Does this help on, affect the timeline of requests as far as reducing? I know I had several constituents ask, there's taking like four months, five months to get just basic for insurance or for work items, trying to get a job and they needed a report from the police department. So does that help with the logjam? Does this funding help with that piece?
That's the idea, yes. To all those degrees.
Yes.
Mayor and Council, the last one on here is TOPAS enhancement. I'm as confused as you guys are on that one. I'm just kidding. So TOPAS is the Regional Wireless Cooperative. They call it the TRWC. So in the simplest ways of describing it, it allows our radio communications that we have for police and fire to be connected through a network with other regions around the Southeast Valley. So for example, we collaborate in this initiative with City of Apache Junction, Gilbert, Queen Creek, the Superstition Fire and Medical District, the Fort McDowell Yavapai Nation. They're primary members of the TRWC, but also Phoenix and other regions around. This funding request is due to operational costs within that organization. So we have for the longest time been a member and a big member of this organization. And it really helps us operationally. But as things have gone throughout time, there has been increases due to professional services, network subscription, monitor costs. So this ad would be helpful for the police budget to continue to fund that, that system and program.
So think about every one of the communities has their own police department and radios. But then that infrastructure that supports all that is done on a regional basis. And so we split up the cost proportionally based on, I think it's based on the number of radios we have or something like that, John. So this is just our proportion of enhancements. So every other community will have a line item like this that they're getting their proportional increase for. So we just sit to, Mesa, it's just been better for us to have partners, of course, you know, in the region, just with this infrastructure, we have to put up the big towers and sending out the signals, well, it makes sense to build a sort of broader area. And so there's kind of TOPAS, and then I can't remember what the other one, but there's the Phoenix has kind of a separate one to take care of that area. So this is just kind of the East Valley Mesa area communication system.
I might just add, I think it was just demonstrated recently when the town of Florence contacted and dispatched some of our fire stuff. So TOPAS goes as far down to there as well as Rio Verde and others.
Does for the next 90 days, hopefully, not for a long time.
Okay.
Temporarily.
But that's where, you know, these systems actually work our neighboring communities so we can facilitate their public safety requests. So it's important.
But they also pay their share.
Yeah, exactly. Everybody pays their share to keep this going.
Thanks, sir. Mayor and Council, I know you're probably exhausted with listening to me speak. So I will do my best not to get a little geeky on this particular slide. When we start getting into staffing numbers and all of that, I have a tendency to get a little excited. But this slide here shows our projected sworn staffing. And this is based on, you know, funding from our general fund, funding from our public safety sales tax. But also, you know, it indicates the support that we have in our community for our police department to continue to grow. You can see all the way on the left, we've gone from 802 budgeted sworn positions to this June, we'll be at 800 or 832. And then you'll see the build-out of those positions over the next several years in anticipation of our Northeast Station. Now, we all know these positions are not all in patrol, but they're representative of our organization and how many people on the sworn side we have in our organization. I'm sure there's going to be questions that you have that popped into your head. If not, I have some things I can continue to talk about on the sworn side specific to patrol, patrol growth, all of that good stuff. But I'll pause because I'm getting indications that there might be some questions for you all.
Oh, go ahead. Please save him. He was looking for a question.
Well, I'm going to jump over to the weeds on overtime, how the department's doing, and specifically telestaff. I'll use the word telestaff, how that's doing. I think you've been prepped on that.
Yep. So Vice, I'm sorry, Councilmember Freeman?
Mark is fine.
Yeah. I almost tried to promote you. Vice Mayor Duff is going to take me out. So telestaff, so.
Do you call it telestaff? I'm just wondering if it's.
We do.
Is that's.
Yep, we do. So that has been a conversation that we've all been involved with for the last several years. So I'm happy to report, last summer, we ran our first pilot program out of our Fiesta Station. I'm sure, you know, with most human beings, change is always really, really difficult. So we didn't quite know what to expect with that pilot program out of our Fiesta Station. But as it turns out, our police officers out of that station really liked the program. They thought it was a very useful tool, and they reported that back to us. So with the support of Mr. Brady, we took all of the information, all of the data from that program, and we came back to Mr. Brady and presented that information. He was in support of us moving forward in the program. So currently, our status is, we are in communication with the company, working out details of how our collaboration and our contract will look with the goal of implementation in our patrol operations at the beginning of January 2023. Now, our time and labor section of the city, they're still working out a lot of the logistics on exactly how it work, how, you know, the systems that need to be built for that to roll in. But we are progressing for that program and looking to go live. We have a two-year plan after that to expand it just from patrol to the rest of the organization. But we wanted to start with patrol because that's the most impactful area. While we're doing it, we will also run our other system that we currently utilize just to ensure that it is most effective and it's helping us with overtime. As you know, with the system, and what our officers loved is if an officer is allowed to take time off, their supervisor puts it in that system. Or if it's a sick day, they put it in that system. And if it takes us below our basic staffing or critical staffing levels, it immediately starts notifying individuals that would be willing to stay over on shift to help cover that shift or to come in and to work that shift on overtime. So it's something that we think is going to be incredibly helpful for us. And we thank you for putting it on our radar.
Well, thanks. I know it's been several years to get going. So I thank the management for doing this because I think it's going to be a cost-saving factor. As you know, Fire's been doing this for like 25 years. And PD's been a little bit slow at it. But once you have this implemented, it's going to be a time-saving factor. And it'll be probably across the board. It'll be a morale booster for the department.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Any other questions? All right, thank you. Does that complete your presentation?
Almost.
I'm sorry.
We have two more slides.
Okay.
Myself and then Krista. So we talked about continuous improvement. I wanted, I wanted to talk about this slide just to give you a peek into the future. And when I say future, it's coming up pretty quick because we've been working for well over a year and really conceptually for four years with Performance Excellence and Mark Castleton and his team with the city to come up with a deployment strategy for our police department. To give you a little bit of background, the International Association of Chiefs of Police, they have one of the only deployment models where you can plug in different metrics into a system and figure out where you deploy your resources. There's really not a lot out there. There's been some attempts. There's been some software companies throughout the country that have tried to get into the business of how do you deploy your resources in policing? And most of them have been amiss. We've purchased some of those a long time ago. You put them in and it doesn't account for a lot of the things that need to be accounted for within a policing model that they've missed. Since then, we've used our analysts, and we have a healthy group of analysts to analytically look at time of day, what type of call, the duration of call, and a lot of different metrics that have been successful. But now we're ready to take this even to another level. And Performance Excellence is doing that for us with the, with the software that they have. So the objective is to improve our response times, which are already very good, but to improve the response times and the service that goes along with that, to balance the workload, and I'll talk about that real quick in a second, and then enhance the span of control. And that is really our first-line supervisors and their actions out in the field to be available, to be out in the field as resources for our officers, especially during our critical incidents and critical decision-making times. So we're using analysis to do that. And the goals are, again, responsive and service-oriented, community engagement, which is a core value of ours, and then our professional crime-fighting model to be built into this. So what you're talking about is an expansion of our beats and the ability to put in our analysis, everything from where a school is, where a business is, what traffic is like, what type of calls are in these areas, and really redefining our divisions within the patrol operations and where we put our resources and how we use them and how we can use metrics to make sure that the response times are quicker in areas that are geographically challenged, even prior to open up the Northeast Station. And to be able to factor in things like absenteeism and what does that mean as far as where we put our resources and how many resources we need? And then the type of incident and how long we're on each type of incident. So an armed robbery, you're going to be on that call a lot longer than you are shoplifting, for example. Mental health-related calls take a while. And then we obviously have some mitigating factors coming our way for that. So all of these are to look at and bring metrics in. And we have a working group of officers that work the street and the sergeants and lieutenants all the way up to, this has been Assistant Chief Westing's project, well over a year, several hours a week to work. well over a year, several hours a week, to work on, to really take us to the next level. I promise you that this model will be a model for nationally on how to deploy patrol resources out in the field, because there really isn't one, and we've searched high and wide, that meets our needs. And so we're excited about this project and where it takes us in the future. We'll start testing this out, even with this next shift bid, which is August of 2022. And we'll start measuring the effectiveness as we open up and get ready for that Northeast Station in 2024.
So Mayor and Council, you've seen some of the work of the data scientists on the fireside, and the work that they've done in helping us to rethink about our deployment, because there were things they told us that we just didn't know, right? You needed the data, you needed the long runs. So they've now been moving a lot of their time and effort over on the police side. And the police department is working very diligently to take that similar type of analysis, right, where you essentially take, is it like 12 years' history of response and the crime? And it is amazing, once you do that, the trends that just fall out. And they can then parse that through that. And then working with the police department, they've really recognized that there are some areas that have, we've created, just, you know, by just historically how we've assigned, or people have chosen to work different shifts and bids, and what, but really kind of also has kind of exposed us in certain areas as far as the staffing that we need during maybe heavier times of incidents, right? We just, you know, we weren't matching up the staffing with where, when, the time of day or days of the week when things are really happening. So that is going to be, that's made it more apparent, I guess, right? It's made it kind of presented that data in a way that the police department can now see that, and see where they can start redeploying or looking at different types of deployment. So we're excited about it. It's taking a lot of conversations, I'm sure, because it's a new way of looking at how we, where we need staffing. You know, the weekends are busy, and we need police officers on the weekends. So we're going to try to do it in an equitable way. But we're, again, we're allowing the data to drive and tell us how to use our very valuable resources. So we're excited to, that the police departments embrace that and trying to work through that and put that in place.
Thank you. Mr. Redio.
Chief, on this data, I've been fairly impressed on how you use metrics already, right, the comsat and those meetings that you have, the officers. When you say real-time, how real, like, is that, could that be next day, or next, what are we talking about as far as real-time? I'm assuming the real-time crime center will also be embedded into, you know, following these metrics. And then also, how do you, you know, when you're in those meetings, it's a lot of numbers and great information, but is there thoughts of how you can visualize that data into other ways where it makes maybe a more impact for our officers to look into, to know that these, this data is important? I'm just more of a visual person, just looking at maybe Excel files, I can grab pieces. But is there other ways that we can visualize that data to make a more impactful kind of resonant of that information to our officers and your sergeants, so that we can deploy those, what you're deploying into the field?
Yeah. Mayor, Councilmember Redio, you're right on the money. It will come in real-time, and we're using, the data warehouse is quite a powerful software system. But we're turning that into very easy visuals through GIS and working with our IT. So a sergeant, for example, would start their shift, and they would be able to see by the map, okay, this is where things have happened within the last 12 hours, within the last 24 hours, and then be able to, along with lieutenant, deploy those resources by using an easy visual for them to see. And that would be available to the officers as well. And we also do that on our transparency page. We're using those type of visuals just for the community. So we're not killing them with a bunch of data sets and spreadsheets, but we're showing visually, this is exactly what we're doing and how we're doing it. And for those sergeants to come in and deploy those resources, and not have to wait for a 28-day period or a 24-hour period to be able to come in and see it real-time, it'll be right there visually for them to see and react to.
Thank you.
Okay. And finally, but not least, our mayor, vice mayor, council members, we have our expenditure summary for the Mesa Police Department. And what this is showing you is not only how we ended last fiscal year, but where our current budget is at for the year, what we're projecting for the current fiscal year, as well as our proposed fiscal year 22, 23 proposed budget. Now, this is a consolidation of multiple funds. And so keep in mind, this includes not only the general fund, but our public safety sales tax funds, grant funds, et cetera. A couple of items I want to just kind of highlight within this report is when you look at our fiscal year-end 2021 actual of 182, 198.2 million versus our revised budget for 237 million. Within that, there is 21 million reflected for personal services. Those personal services expenditures is what was funding our additional positions for the current fiscal year, the 3% step increase that eligible employees received last July. And then also, there is 14.6 million towards the smoothing of the public safety pension retirement system liability for the city, which is reflected in there. Also reflected within the current year's revised budget is 4.4 million in lifecycle funds, which was used to purchase a lot of greatly needed items for the police department. Now, the other item I would like to highlight is if you look at the revised budget for the current year and our year-end estimate, you'll see a $5 million overage. Keeping in mind that this is, again, a consolidation of funds, this is just for transparency purposes, this is a netting of budgetary capacity we have within the public safety sales tax funds and grant funds that we don't anticipate using with an overage primarily within the general fund of approximately 10 million. Now, again, our department is very heavily employee personnel-based, with over 80% of our department expenditures being personal services. That overage is also what is being driven behind that. We have been, with the various vacancies we've had throughout the year, and staffing for both our sworn and civilian positions, those create vacancy savings. But then on the flip side, we've also had overtime, additional overtime as a result of those vacancy savings, or the vacancies, rather, not the savings. Also impacting that is the 3.3 million for the 5% market adjustment, which was implemented in February of this year. So that's included in there. And then we have $1 million for the $2,000 one-time payments that we made out to our non-mission-critical staff. As far as the 2,000 one-time payments for our mission-critical staffing and the $2,500 payments, 3.6 million of that is being funded under ARPA. And then additionally reflected in there is 1.5 million in what we call separation payments, which are for members retire from the police department, and they get paid out their vacation and sick leave. So that is kind of what is driving those numbers there. What you'll see for next fiscal year for the proposed budget of 245.3 million, that includes a 5.17% inflationary adjustment for our baseline budget. And then also, the proposed 4% step pay for eligible employees is included in there as well. And then finally, for the FTEs, for the full-time employees, the equivalent, currently, we are at 1,330 full-time or FTEs for the police department of what we're supporting with the budget. Next fiscal year, you'll see that number is at 1,362. Those 32 additional FTEs are reflective of what the chief spoke on earlier regarding our record staffing, police psychologists, et cetera. Any questions?
Yes, Ms. Spillsbury.
So all the numbers increased to the next year's budget, except training and wellness, which dropped by 5 million. And that's alarming to me. So what's that explanation?
That's, yes, that's a very good point, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmember Spillsbury. For training and wellness, that is a very heavily employee-based area. And so our actual budget, our adopted budget for the current fiscal year was 11 million for that area. That included 7 million personal services, 2 million in lifecycle that we were appropriated, as well as 2 million for commodities and other services. Currently, you're seeing 17.3 million, which is significantly higher than the adopted budget. Of that, 14.7 million is for personal services, of what 1.5 million is for overtime within there. The main reason driving that is our recruits and the officers and training that we have, they are all ran through the training and wellness area. So we do have 3 million budgeted each year to support those recruits as they go through the academy. However, they run more around 10 million for the year. But the purpose of them to be in the pipeline is to fill our upcoming vacancies. And so what we really do is we have vacancy savings then within other areas. And as they become available, we push that over to fund those recruits that are running through there. So that's why you see the uptick for the current year of the 17 million, then it drops back down for next year, back to that baseline.
By the time you get to the revised budget for 2022, 23, it'll probably go higher.
It could, yes.
Because you're going to be running three academies.
Right.
That's right.
And you're going to have a.
Yes.
Okay.
When you were talking about personal services earlier, I couldn't find it on the graph, because it doesn't say personal services. So I didn't realize that it fell into that category. So anyways, that makes sense why, I didn't correlate that with the training and wellness, but that makes sense. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions?
I have a couple of questions. Now, on an earlier slide, we saw some other cities that we were funding positions to do their dispatch and other services. And so are those figures included in here?
Yes, Vice Mayor.
Or are they netted out? Okay.
Yes, they are. You'll see that.
There are employees, yeah. So they are.
Forensic services, that line item, that first one, that shows the additional services that we've contracted with Queen Creek and Tempe, as well as communications with our 911 and dispatching services. You'll see that increased from the 8 million, you know, to next fiscal year of 11 million. That's accounting for those services.
So we're looking at the budget expenditures, and we have a couple of revenue sources, of course, the offset for these positions. But also, we have the transfer that we do from the general fund into, for public safety, right? Do we look at what the, how we're doing on that transfer, how those revenues set aside? Are they covering it, or are they?
Well, they don't, they don't cover, I don't know what percentage, they don't cover the full cost of public safety. It's just, I can't really set it at a certain percentage.
It's 25% of the total transfer goes towards public safety, so right about now, for about 115 million in total transfer.
Right. So and you can see this budget is over 245 million. So it's less than half.
Right. But because it is, our sales, fortunately, our sales tax revenue has been increasing, therefore, the transfers, even though it's the same percentage, I assume that that is increasing. How is that all, is that at the end, when we look at the master budgets, where we see how all those pieces come together?
Yeah, that comes in at, sure, that all comes in at the larger full fund. It doesn't come at the police department. So, but it shows up in our general governmental fund. It'll show it as a transfer into that fund, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions?
Okay, so it does. We need to go to.
Yes, I know we have Judge Tatts ready. If you don't mind, I think we've been about an hour and a half into this. Why don't we take a five-minute break and reconvene at 9 o'clock straight up for Judge Tatts? Thank you. Well, we are all back. And Judge Tatts, it's good to have you here. We're excited to learn more about domestic violence court. Thank you for running a great, I'll just take another opportunity to tell you how proud we are of your court. And we had the opportunity to interview some candidates recently, and we're just reminded of the great work you're doing. So welcome, and we're looking forward to learning more about expanding our specialty courts.
Well, thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. Good morning. Yesterday, I had the privilege of speaking at the statewide new judge orientation on the topic of specialty courts. And I was no doubt asked to do that because of the well-deserved reputation Mesa's had for its specialty courts. And that's only possible because of the continuing support of city council and city management. So I'm very grateful to all of you for that. Vice Mayor Duff, I think you asked me at my very first State of the Court address, are we going to have a domestic violence court? And I'm happy to announce that we are. As of July 7th of this year, that will come to fruition. So I know I don't need to sell all of you on what a serious issue domestic violence is, but just to give you a few statistics, here in Arizona, almost 43% of women have experienced violence or stalking from an intimate partner. 33% of men have as well. Every 44 minutes, one or more children witness an act of domestic violence. So this obviously is a very serious issue. Mesa, in 2019, there were four homicides and 119 aggravated assaults from domestic violence. The aggravated assaults almost quadrupled in 2020. The homicides doubled. So clearly, there's something that we need to try and do about this. One thing that hasn't changed over the research in the 25 years that I've been in this business with respect to domestic violence is the cycle of abuse. Unless there's effective intervention, one incident's going to lead to another, it's going to lead to another, it's going to lead to another, and each time it's going to get more serious. And that's what the research has always shown. And I emphasize effective intervention. There was a 2018 report from the National Center of State Courts. They did an exhaustive study on the research from courts on recidivism. And they determined something that was very different from what we were told in the 90s, that counseling alone is not effective in reducing recidivism. You've got to do something more than that. But they are effective when they're part of a coordinated community response. And that's what we're looking to do with the domestic violence court. They specifically had eight recommendations for what courts can do to respond to this, and two of those will be implemented in a domestic violence court. The first being a domestic violence docket that more effectively enhances accountability of the offenders, manages and reduces the risk, and promotes victim safety and well-being. Also, another recommendation was specialized probation units to provide enhanced contact with victims and convicted persons. And that's what we're looking to do through our domestic violence court. This is definitely a collaborative effort. Behind me, I've got Robin Dunham, who is Deputy Court Administrator over specialty courts. I've got City Prosecutor Paul Hawkins. I've got City Public Defender Meg Leal. All of us have been planning for this for months. We've been looking at what we believe will be best practices, how we're going to implement this, the specifics of what we're going to do, and how it's all going to work. One of the things that's going to be very important is that all the participants have training in the dynamics of domestic violence. And we're going to strongly encourage everyone who participates to do that. So again, as you heard Chief Cost talk about best practices and evidence-based practices, that's what we want to make sure we're doing. Commitment to procedural justice is going to be very important for this court. What that is, is basically making sure everybody understands that there's legitimacy in the court, that there's fairness, that everybody's going to be heard, that everybody's going to be treated with respect and dignity. And that's going to be important for everyone. The victims need to know that the court is a place of protection, that they will be heard, that their input will be considered, that they do have a voice, that it is somewhere, can be very traumatic for a victim to have to come to court and deal with these situations. We want to lessen that trauma. We want to make them comfortable. We want to make sure, through the victim advocates and other resources that we bring into the court, that they feel it's a safe place to come and do what they need to do to protect themselves and protect their family. But by the same token, we also want to make sure that defendants coming in, innocent until proven guilty. We are going to handle both pre-adjudicated domestic violence cases as well as post-adjudicated. The defendants need to know that they're going to have a fair shake, that they're going to be immediately appointed a public defender. Ms. Leal is already recruiting for two positions that will be specifically in the domestic violence court, strong public defenders who will make sure that their due process rights are protected, that they know that they're going to get a fair shake. But once they are, if they are found guilty, that they'll be held accountable. And that procedural justice is important, because this research has shown, if they feel like they got a fair shake, then they're more inclined to follow the court's orders. And that's going to be very important in this. But promotion of victim safety and access to services, again, will be very paramount. Obviously, the ultimate goal is changing offender behavior. You're going to have situations where offenders are going to stay in that relationship. The victims want to keep the relationship going. In those situations, we want to make sure that we're helping that family dynamic, taking the abuse out of the relationship. You're also going to have the other case, where the victim realizes enough's enough, I'm getting out, and we want to make sure that they're protected, and that the offenders are held accountable. So we have asked you to support two new positions in our court. The first is a probation monitoring officer. This person's going to actively monitor a defendant's compliance with probation terms. This is someone who we hope will have a direct link or a direct contact with somebody in the police department. If an offender is not complying with their. If an offender is not complying with their terms, if they're doing something right now, it's going to take a couple of months to get them back into court, to hold them accountable. We want it done within a week or two. And if they're not showing up to take care of it and a warrant's issued, we're hoping the police will be able to serve those warrants as soon as possible, so we can get them in and frankly nip this in the bud in situations where it needs to be. So again, ensuring swift and certain accountability, one of the tools that we can use is deferred as opposed to suspended jail sentences. And what that means is, right now, a lot of times, someone will be placed on unsupervised probation with suspended jail. There has to be a complete hearing for that. You've got to wait till, a lot of times, it's because they haven't done the counseling. So the prosecutor's office waits to hear from the counseling office that they're not doing the counseling. They file a petition to revoke. We get it, we have to issue a summons, we have to try and get the person in here. Deferred jail and much more regular hearings will allow us, we don't have to wait for a probation violation to be proven, we don't have to have separate hearings, we can impose the jail when they show up. We can say, and again, with that procedural justice, the person knows this going into it. They know when they agreed to their probation terms, that if you're not doing what you need to do, the court's going to have the power to impose two days' jail, three days' jail, five days' jail. And if they're not doing what they need to do and they come in, that can be imposed right away without that delay. Again, just to make sure that there's that accountability and that legitimacy to what we're doing. Also, the probation monitoring officer will absolutely be an additional resource for the victims. You can imagine situations where the victim and the offender are staying together, maybe the offender's not breaking any new laws, maybe they're not even violating the terms of their probation, but they're doing things that has the victim concerned. Maybe they're drinking when they shouldn't be, or they're getting angry, things like that. We're hoping that the probation monitoring officer would be a resource for that victim, so she could, she or he could call him or her and say, hey, I'm just not feeling good about this, can you talk to them? Can you seek them out? Something we just do not have at this point to do that. They could call the victim advocates in the prosecutor's office, but getting, the victim advocates obviously are not going to contact the defendants. A probation monitoring officer would. The second position we're looking for is-
Excuse me?
Yeah, of course.
Yes, Mr. Luna.
Hey, thank you, Judge. I want to commend you for this. I think this is something that's badly needed in our community. Are you also working with many of our local agency community partners that have dealt with domestic violence for the, you know, last fifty years? I'm talking about New Leaf. You know, we have shelters here in the city of Mesa, along with other agencies. Tell me your relationship with them and how do you plan to work with them as you move forward?
Mayor, Councilmember Luna, that is a great question, and it's funny you mention that, because I was up on the seventh floor a couple of weeks ago, and I got to meet Mr. Hughes from New Leaf. I had not met him before. My relationship frankly is non-existent with those. I think that's something we definitely need to do. I'm certain that the victim advocates from the prosecutor's office are aware of some of those resources. But I agree, I think we need to have a much more direct link, and that, I think, is something that I definitely want to put on the agenda for our next planning meeting, because I do know that they have resources out there that we are not aware of yet, that we have not been able to incorporate yet, but that is something we definitely need to do. All right, so the second position we're asking for is a program assistant, who will be a court staff person dedicated to the domestic violence court, to ensure that the information's disseminated to all the individuals, all the stakeholders in the court, to make sure we have as much information as possible on this particular defendant. Obviously, one size does not fit all. There's going to be different treatment plans, different resources, different terms of probation, things that we need to do with offenders. And the way that we'll know that, when we hold a staffing before the actual court docket, is the program assistant putting together a calendar, saying, here's what you need to know about each of these individuals that we can pull. Maybe they have a DUI case pending in another courtroom in our courthouse. Maybe they have a history of domestic violence, those type of things that we'll need to know they can help with. And one of their main goals, or main roles, will also be to provide comprehensive and transparent statistics. One of the things we've learned from community court is oftentimes, they come before you and you ask for statistics. And it's harder, of course, to go back and try and get those. And that's what we've tried to do with community court, because frankly, when we spun it up, we weren't keeping the statistics that we want to. In this, we're going to hit the ground running, we're going to be keeping detailed, transparent, put it on the website, statistics, so that we can evaluate again for best practices and make sure we're doing the things that we need to do. Mr. Hawkins informed me today that he's been talking to IT to try and look at some numbers from the past year with the similar types of cases, to see what we've had in terms of recidivism over the past year or years, so that we'll have something to compare it to as a baseline for once we've started this court. And that's all I have, unless you have any questions.
Thank you. I know I do. Council, other questions? Ms. Spillsbury?
Is there any overlap here with like the homeless court with domestic violence? Or is domestic violence for people who have homes? Or how do you deal with that?
Mayor, Councilmember Spillsbury, right now, in like community court, for example, we don't accept domestic violence cases. Community court's a very different model. Community court's more of trying to help the offender connect with services, connect with things that, you know, maybe societal issues have not caused them to commit the low-level crimes that they're charged with committing, but have certainly contributed to that. We're trying to fix that situation for them. As long as they take advantage of the services, we can dismiss their case. This is much more of an accountability court. This is much more to protect victims and to make sure that offenders who are found guilty are held accountable. So they're really, while there's always the possibility that someone who is homeless committed an act of domestic violence, theoretically, they could be in both courts. We've done that. We've had people in community court that had a domestic violence case. We wouldn't allow that into community court, we would handle that separately through our regular court. Now we could refer that if it meant the criteria. Again, and I didn't really get into this, but the domestic violence court's going to be for the most serious cases. We will never have the resources, it would basically, to move every single domestic violence case in. We're looking at the ones that we really think are higher-risk, more lethality-based possibilities. But it's certainly possible that someone could be in both.
Okay, great, and thank you so much for doing this. It's so needed, and I think it's going to really help our community and families as well. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. You know, I love the specialty courts, because it seems like oftentimes, we're prosecuting people for either being poor or being mentally ill. And so the diversion programs, you know, through the veterans' court and community courts are really great. This seems a little, the subject matter's slightly different, right? Now we're talking about, in domestic violence situations, where sometimes people are accused of fairly serious crimes. And so diversion, maybe, it seems like you're using it to be more intensely involved as opposed to, you know, looking for a more appropriate way to, rather than being, punishing people, you know, you're rehabilitating them. So it doesn't, I'm still trying to figure out how that fits, you know, in the domestic violence scenario. But I mean, you kicked this off by telling us about this spike in aggravated assaults and homicides. Those, that's a very serious issue, but those are, you don't deal with those in your court, right? So what is the typical domestic violence scenario that you deal with in your court? Because if someone's in a domestic violence situation and they've actually seriously injured someone, you're not going to be seeing those people, right? So, am I correct? And who are you going to be seeing?
Mayor, that's a great point, and you're correct. We obviously would not be seeing homicides or aggravated assaults in our misdemeanor court, but that's where the cycle of abuse and domestic violence comes into play. Based on the research, someone who's gotten to the point where they're committing aggravated assault or homicide has probably committed some prior misdemeanor cases of domestic violence. Our hope is that we can rehabilitate that person, to kind of use your term from the other courts, so that we can make sure that they're getting the counseling, make sure that we're protecting the victim, make sure that we're holding that person accountable so that they won't go on to commit those more serious crimes. Obviously, we can't get involved with those at our court level, but we're hoping that we can stop those from happening by dealing with it after they've committed an assault that didn't lead to serious injury, or an assault that didn't involve a weapon, or maybe a stalking case where the victim took out an order of protection and the defendant's continually violating it, and the prosecutor says, this one's worrying us, we want to move this into domestic violence court. So those are the cases we'll be generally handling in domestic violence court. Domestic violence can be as simple as two people get in a fight and get a little bit loud and disturb the neighbors, disorderly conduct. Those we'll continue to handle in our regular court, as long as they don't advance to something more serious. But when it's an injury assault or a stalking type of case, those are the cases that are generally going to be transferred to the specialized docket.
And Mayor, Council, if I could add too, the increase in domestic violence is being seen, obviously, throughout other communities and throughout the county. And what that does is then put, as far as the distinction between felonies and misdemeanors is where I think the mayor was going, and sort of the level of what kind of cases are coming within the city court. As those pressures are on the county, and they're getting more felony cases, we're seeing push down. In other words, their cases that they could have charged as felonies are actually coming back to the city. And so we're actually seeing more serious cases actually coming back to the city court as they also, on the county level, are selecting the most serious of the felonies to take, and then sending back other cases to cities to prosecute as misdemeanors. And so we're actually seeing more serious domestic violence cases within the city court. And so the timing of this is really critical now, especially what's happened over the pandemic, and you've seen just the spike in domestic violence cases. But also, the seriousness of the cases are actually becoming more serious, even within our court because of the pressures of the county.
Great, well, I'm in total support. I can't think of a better way to spend our money than funding these positions and putting our resources in this situation. So, thank you. I'm very supportive and appreciate your proactiveness in setting this up.
Mayor, if I could add one more thing, I'd really like to thank Judge Tatts and Meg Leal. This really has been a program that requires all of us to work together to make this court. This court is, I think Judge Tatts said it very well before, so I won't try to restate it. There's a real distinction between this court and community court and accountability of the seriousness of this crime. And so I really want to thank the work that Judge Tatts has done to bring this court into fruition. And I'll also add that we're also looking at ways to both improve and increase the victim assistance that we're able to provide through the prosecutor's office. So there's another aspect of this, and that is providing increased, and Judge Tatts talked about in the concept of the monitoring officer, but also through the city prosecutor's office, increasing the services that we provide to the victims, which is obviously another very important piece of this. And so I want to thank Council for its support, and also especially Councilmember Heredia, who has been very active in showing his both is support and encouragement for victims of domestic violence. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
I have a couple of questions. First of all, this is, this court is more about the accountability of, you know, the persecutor, the one that's creating the violence, as far as reporting to parole or their jail time or whatever like that. Is there any conditions as far as them participating in any programming, any counseling, any kind of, to stop the cycle, other than just to stop the violence, stopping the mental, you know, having those tools mentally to stop their urge to use violence?
Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor Duff, yes. First of all, obviously, domestic violence counseling is required for anybody who's convicted of a first offense of domestic violence. If they've been previously ordered, you don't have to send them, but generally, you would. But that's going to be part of a comprehensive program. That's one of the things that I think will be really good about this court, is it won't be like a one-size-fits-all, let's just send them to a domestic violence program, a counseling program, and see what happens. If we see mental health issues, we obviously, through community court, have a relationship with some of the regional behavioral health authorities, that we can find out if they're seriously mentally ill and have access to services to treat that type of thing. Obviously, if they have substance abuse issues, we can, you know, hook them in with some sort of substance abuse counseling. I know the prosecutor's office has asked maybe at some point if we could have some sort of drug and alcohol testing, which we don't currently do through our court, but that is something we could certainly look into, and we are looking into considering doing. So this would be a much more comprehensive, again, not a one-size-fits-all, looking at the offender and saying, all right, what are the tools or what are the services that we need to bring in here to try and rehabilitate, to change that behavior?
So the services are a condition of going through the probation or through the, anyway, it's a requirement, it's just not, well, here's some services, and I hope you take advantage of it. It's like, this is no requirement to go through the accountability.
Exactly. So the person would still be placed on probation, you know, with certain terms, you know, remain law-abiding, don't threaten, harm, harass, or assault the victim, or in cases where the victim doesn't want contact, don't have any contact with the victim, complete domestic violence counseling program, complete any other programs that the team would feel was necessary in that case. Those would be specific terms of probation that they have to follow. And what this court would allow us to do is be on top of that and make sure that they are doing those things that we've determined are necessary to change the behavior, and if they're not doing them, to do something about it much more quickly.
And I assume we had those terms before, but we just didn't have the tools to enforce it? Is that what the difference is, what we're doing now?
We have the tools, but they're not nearly as effective, because, again, there's that delay. We also don't have the specialized people who are really looking at more of what that person needs. I mean, a typical domestic violence case now in our court may or may not include some jail, may or may not include some fines. It's generally just going to be unsupervised probation and go to domestic violence counseling. This will allow us to really look more deeper into it and say, all right, we also need to include this, 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 and this. And again, if they don't do it, we can be right on top of it. You know, again, in a typical situation, that person's not coming back to court for a few months if they're not complying with the terms of probation right now. We're going to have sentence reviews set at a minimum once a month, and at first, once we get up to speed, hopefully much sooner than that. So we'll be able to get on top of this within a couple of weeks at the most, and be able to say, hey, person's not doing it, they'll be before me, I can send them to jail for a weekend, or if they don't show up, we issue a warrant, hopefully call the police and say, hey, you know, if you've got the resources, please go out and get this person right now.
Great, wonderful. I love the program. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any additional comments on this or questions, Council? Mr. Thompson?
Well, eventually, I'd like to see what our 2021 and year-to-date numbers are for Mesa. Because I know 2020 was kind of, that was a rough year. We were all, you know, in lockdown mode, and I know my wife probably wanted to kill me or beat me, you know, when she was cooped up with me for almost a year. But I would love to see what those numbers look like, see how we're trending. And then also, as a follow-up from you, maybe in another six months or so, come back to Council and show us, or tell us how this program's working out, and see what else we need to do to ensure that we're supporting you and the courts and our citizens. Thank you.
Mayor, Councilmember Thompson, I really appreciate that. And yeah, that is definitely, like I said, one of the goals of this program is to have the statistics and stay right on top of it and make it transparent, so that all of you can see that it is working, or if it's not, what we need to do to make sure it is working.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you, everybody.
Please communicate to your court that we appreciate you taking this on.
Will do, thank you.
All right, next item on our agenda, Mr. Brady, that's all we have for the budget today, right? Okay. Thank you, that wasn't enough. Next is the current event summary and conferences attended. Council, anything you'd like to share with us? You know, Mr. Freeman and I were at an event yesterday that I thought was really good. Mr. Freeman, the ribbon cutting for the-
Oak Street Pill.
Yeah, Oak Street. It was, it's kind of a different model. This is family practice for Medicare patients that have, you know, not just taking their temperature and pushing pills, but I mean, more social services and addressing the disconnected seniors in our city. So that's Oak Street Health out on Main and Lindsay. But that was, that was fun to see, that kind of innovative approach to medical care coming to our city, and fun to be a part of that. Anybody have any other things they'd like to highlight?
I always have a few.
Yes, Vice Mayor.
On Tuesday, I attended Ola East Valley, and that's the East Valley Hispanic Chamber of Commerce meeting. I love the work that they're doing in working with small businesses and helping them. This one is about cash flow and looking at how you can make your business more efficient. I appreciated that information that they provide. I appreciate that information that they provide. Also, on that same day, I, with Economic Development, I visited that Amphenol Campus and Times Microwave Tour down in District 4, near Mesa Drive and Baseline. They're a cable and communications, they make cable and communication products for, like SpaceX and the F-35 fighter jet and missile defense, very, very high-tech, an amazing group of sister businesses. I think there's like five along there. And so, this is a, an initiative from Economic Development to get to know our businesses in our districts. I appreciate that, and knowing more about their business, how we can support them, ways that we can, if they need expansion, whatever, and workforce, and making our relationship more meaningful with the businesses. So, thank you to Lori and Celine for arranging this yesterday, and, oh, no, that was Tuesday. And Wednesday, yesterday, Councilmember Freeman and I spoke at Rotary about our districts, and Mesa's Rotary is the oldest Rotary Club in Mesa, and they're celebrating 100 years this year, so, proud to be a member. Thank you.
I think there are people who have actually been a member of that club for 100 years. The last time I went to one of those meetings, I got that impression.
That was on the draw.
I'm sorry.